I would like to, good afternoon, still good morning. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order the chair calls on the assistant clerk for the role call, Jennifer Smith.
Councilwoman Tolls.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Worthy is absent today. Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Councilman Reed is absent today. We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead us in the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we come to you today with open arms, God, and open hearts to your blessings for our city. We want to pray especially, Father, for the family of the citizen that has so tragically lost their lives, life here in our city and our river. Father, we pray for our first responders who for days have been searching and looking. And we pray for them as they do their work for our community. We pray for the family of the lost one, and we pray for the families of our first responders, Father. Father, we pray for our city. We'd like to lift Gaston up to you and that the things that you, that we do today, you'll find pleasing. Father, we ask now to forgive us of our sins and to help us as we deliberate the business of the City of Gaston. We pray this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Human Relations Advisory Committee, the work session and city council meeting that was held April the 12th.
So move.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of April the 8th through the 14th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Right. We do have a proclamation this morning, Child Prevention Abuse Month, and Ms. Emma Clapp of the Family Life Center, and is that Patricia Falcon?
The Berry Center.
Of the James Berry Center.
Yeah.
Would you all come forward? This proclamation from the City of Gaston. Whereas the preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. And whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced to making sure each family has the support they need to raise their children in a healthy environment. Whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harms the children, but also increases the likelihood of criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems such as heart disease, obesity, and risky behavior such as smoking. And whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting families in raising their children in a safe nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Therefore, Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gaston, on behalf of the Department of Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention, the Family Success Center of Eddoaw County, and the James M. Berry Center hereby proclaims April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And upon all's, call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our effort to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live. Sherman Guyton, Mayor, Ivana Nelson, City Clerk. I'd like to say we appreciate these organizations because we know that child abuse is very prevalent. I've never been able to understand how anyone could abuse children, but it happens all the time. I want to say one thing, I remember a situation where a man, I don't know what his problem was, but he threw his children off of the bridge going into New Orleans. And so that's, that's really devastating, and you want to understand why it happens, but it happens.
Thank you. Maybe I'll get on this other side. Which way are we going?
Count three, one, two, three, one, four, one, two.
Thank you.
That's okay.
No, it's okay.
Okay, we'll say something.
Okay, Chuck, you go ahead. You want to say something?
Go ahead.
Go first.
Okay.
My name is Emma Clapp. I'm from the Family Success Center of Eddoaw County. And Aaron's Law was adopted into Alabama, which essentially states that every child between the ages of kindergarten through 12th grade have to learn about child abuse and sex, and sexual child abuse. We have three programs in our office that actually go into the schools and see children of all ages and teach them on an age appropriate level what child abuse is, how to tell if it's happening to them, and how to tell a trusted adult. A lot of our kids don't know what child abuse is. They don't realize that they're being abused because they don't know what's not normal until someone tells them that that's not normal, because this is their norm. So we spend a lot of time working with this, so we want to say thank you for allowing us to come at this proclamation and for working with us as a city council. We've been good partners for a long time, and we want to continue that. And we really wanted Ms. Falcon to come because we try to do the prevention side, and she gets the other side of that. So I'm going to give her a minute to say something.
Thank you. I'll let you all do it.
Oh, thanks.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Falcon, and I'm the Executive Director for the James Berry Center for Children. On behalf of our staff and our Board of Directors, and most importantly, the children and families that we serve daily, I want to say thank you for the support of the City of Gaston. I have left you with our brochure, and you will see certainly the, the services that we provide. But as the Children's Advocacy Center and the only one serving here in Eddoaw County, we're one of 47 across the state of Alabama. Actually, Children's Advocacy Centers were created and started here in the state of Alabama, and we're very proud of that as our national center is in Huntsville. But just like the center in Huntsville, we do that, that same kind of work in providing specialized forensic interviews, trauma therapy, and community support and education across the community in training social workers, in training our nurses at Gaston State, in training the social workers at JSU, and churches and community providers related to mandatory reporting. But the core of our services is working as a part of a team with all of our law enforcement jurisdictions here, also the District Attorney's Office, our medical providers, and law enforcement and DHR. You'll see in this brochure that this year, I think, was the highest percentage that we've served in terms of the residents of the City of Gaston. Forty-one point seven percent of the children that we have interviewed this last year are residents of the City of Gaston or had a crime occur in the City of Gaston. Literally, as I said, the highest that we've had, I think, since I started in, in 2010. And so it's important for me to share with you that number because I want you to know of the nearly 300 interviews that we did last year, almost half came from your city. And so we want to continue to say thank you for the support of the City of Gaston. Thank you for recognizing Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and understand the impact of a child advocacy center in, in the work that we do and partnering with other agencies here in the community to, to serve children when they have been a victim of child abuse. Eighty-seven percent of the kids that we see are victims of child sexual abuse. And we are seeing more and more violent crimes against children, more and more influence of child pornography in the cases that we see. And so it's important that you know that, and you know the impact of child abuse here in, in your community that you get to oversee. And so we're thankful for the support of the City of Gaston, and I'm available for questions. We certainly would love to have you come and have a tour sometime. You'll see, we've left you with a pinwheel and a special pin because our motto, if you will, this year is to say, every child is safe and every community aware. And my job is to make sure that as a community, you know the impact of child abuse and what that costs your city and what that, that ultimate cost is for the children that, that we serve here in, in the City of Gaston. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Real quick, just point of privilege on the, the Berry Center and the Family Success Center, Ms. Clapp and Ms. Falcon, thank you for what y'all do, but I just want to throw this out there real quick. You can reach either one of these organizations on social media. They do operate off of donations from the public and local businesses. There are several, several charitable events throughout the year that benefit these entities. And I'll, I'll run these down real quick for the Berry Center. They do accept supplies, paper towels, tissue paper, Kleenex, liquid soap, blank DVDs, copy paper, stamps, writing tablets, Lysol, Clorox, individually wrapped snacks, snacks and drinks, white drawing paper, watercolor paint and brushes, Play-Doh, markers, journals, craft kits, et cetera. So please, if you find it in your heart, reach out to these organizations and help them support, support their, their efforts. Thank you.
You guys are, you guys are heroes. It shouldn't be understated what you do in our community, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. We will continue with our agenda. Our first item is approving the issuance of an alcoholic beverage license to William Avery Jr. doing business as Avery Blues Hall of Famer located at 1045 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3 for a lounge retail liquor license, Class 1. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on March the 15th. What is the pleasure of the council? The pleasure of the council is to extend this 60 days. There is a still ongoing court hearing, so we're, I'm asking that we extend this to 60 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution 60 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table 60 days.
The next item, there's no council action that's needed because the resolution on 1625 Cal, Cal Avenue in District 3, the business, the nuisance has already been abated by the owner. The next item, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in favor to or in opposition of a resolution authorizing economic development agreement with KVN AT Food Store Inc. to locate a food city grocery store at 951 Rainbow Drive. This is to grant a rebate of 2% of the city's 5% sales tax proceeds for a period of five years from the opening date until a total of six, $6,738,160 has been paid to the developer, whichever comes first. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? All right, if you'll come to the podium and give your name and address.
I'm not a speaker, so y'all bear with me. My name is Janice Brown, and I'm a member of RSVP, so I highly approve the Success Center. I've volunteered with them before, so I approve of them. No, what I was, I don't agree with the new grocery store there, and I'm sorry, I wish I could, but, and I know we need some more things in Gaston, but we've got so many grocery stores. And as old as I am, if I can go to all of them, and I have been to all of them, we've got Gregerson's in Atala, we've got Walmart on Rainbow Drive, I mean, on 77. We've got Publix at the corner of 77 and Rainbow Drive. We've got Winn-Dixie coming up the drive. We've got Save-A-Lot at the, at the River up here. And then if you go over in East Gaston, we've got Aldi's, we've got another Walmart, and if you go out further, we've got a big Johnson's. And then downtown, we have another Johnson's. And we have a grocery store in Alabama City that we, what, less than two years ago, or approximately, sorry, we gave them tax rebates, the one over in Alabama City. Every single, I've been in every one of these. I mean, of course, I travel, I'm sorry, but, and all of the dollar stores, without exception, even dollar, what do you got, the dollar store over in East Gaston, all of them sell groceries, every one of them. Even some of the service stations sell groceries. I just, I just can't see another grocery store, especially since we just put one over there. Only place I know of that really needs a grocery store is Re City, and they need one really, really bad. But my other objection to it is, I go to the mall usually at least once a week, and my late husband used to fuss because when I'd go down there shopping, he'd go with me, there wasn't anything for men down there. He'd just sit there and be bored. He said the thing he missed the most at the mall was going in Sears Tool Department. And he said, he wished they'd put some tools back down there. He used to go in and give him a screwdriver, a box of nails or something, because, you know, you could go in from the side, and it wasn't that hard to get in and out for him. And I just, I'd, I'd almost like to see a toy store down there because when I look for a nice toy for my grandchildren or great-grandchildren, whatever, there's just really no place to go that's quick and go in and get just toys. And someone had suggested that they, we might, and I know they've done it in some places, put a nursery in the mall, which would be open like for, just for babies and preschool children. That would be open from like 10:00 in the morning until 2:00. And I bet there's a lot of grandmas, maybe even a few grandpas, that would be willing to help with something like that. I mean, there would be a charge for it, but I bet some of these ladies would love to do that, they'd like the little extra income, and they'd like to know that their children were safe, and they didn't have to drag them all over these stores with them crying, wanting their bottles or wanting a nap or something. But I, I think there's other things we can put there. And two, last Friday, and I was at, I go to the mall all the time, last Friday, early afternoon, as I was coming out, they had another fender bender, I guess you'd call it. The access going in and out of the mall is bad. Last year, the guy that cuts my grass, Josh Davenport, he was coming down from Meagan, turning into the mall. There was a lady coming up the drive, she was trying to beat the light, she T-boned him. His car was turned sideways, the wheels were facing Rainbow Drive. I saw the wreck, I saw the one last Friday, too. Josh and his, since wife and her two children, could have easily been killed. The turn in and turn out there is really, really dangerous. And I know these two wrecks I saw are not the only ones they've had there. We need, I think, to do something about that turn in because I try to avoid it like the plague. I go up Fourth Street most of the time, and Fourth Street's just a little two-lane, so it gets congested sometimes. But I just think we could find something else besides another grocery store. If, if all these dollar stores didn't sell groceries, and I got, and like I said, I go in them, too. I've been in every one of them I've mentioned, and probably more at some point in time. But I'm sorry, that's just my opinion.
I didn't, did, did we get your name and address?
I'm sorry.
Your name and address.
Janice Brown, I'm sorry.
For the record.
That's fine, Janice Brown.
Okay, and your address?
I live up on the mountain, above the falls.
Okay.
And I'm having a house redone over in East Gaston that I'm going to move into because we bought the house years ago from Mike McCartney Jr. You cannot get in and out of my house without going up and down steps. I live in the middle of 14 acres.
Well, I'll tell Councilman Reed that you can't, that he missed you. All right.
But we go up and down, I go up and down those stairs, carrying things up and down all the time, so I'm redoing the house in East Gaston. I am going to move over there. But I wish we could find something besides a grocery store. That's my opinion.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone speak in favor?
Well, I think we got.
Well, somebody against?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Blake Sytts, I represent Johnson's Giant Food. I am the general supervisor over all the Johnson's. I was awarded that position in August of 2020, and Mac and Lynn are just kind of out doing their thing, and I get to run the day-to-day operations. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak our opinion and voice our concerns. First, we're not afraid of competition. We're not. Since 1975 in Atala and 1983 here in Gaston Downtown, we've had competition. We believe the way we treat our customers by the quality of our customer service, the quality meats, produce, and, and over the last 10 years, the return of our deli is what sets us apart, okay? So competition is not, is not our concern here. Johnson's has been in Gaston, as mentioned before, since 1983 with our downtown location. And in 1997, we opened the East Gaston location and eventually bought the plaza in which the store sits, bringing life back to that area and that plaza once when Dixie left. It was kind of a ghost town for a while, and we brought life back to it. And all of our, we have almost a full plaza except for one, and we actually use it for storage because we're doing well over in East Gaston, and we're very blessed to serve this community. We currently employ 51 people downtown and 149 people at our East Gaston location. So that's 200 employees in Gaston that we, that we get to put to work and we call our family members. With the payroll tax of said people and the 5% city tax, we paid in over $1.1 million in tax revenue to the City of Gaston last year with just those two stores alone. In 2021, we employed 398 people alone just between those two stores. Now, of course, we have 200 employees, so some of them found maybe better opportunities or, you know, maybe just didn't want to work. My point by saying this is that Johnson's for almost 40 years has been here. We support our local schools, churches, and different various functions and charitable. We, we support Eddoaw County, we just, at Christmas, we sold goods to the Eddoaw County Sheriff's Department made below, actually, we just tried to cover our 4% cost we get from our wholesaler. When we, when we help the food bank, local food bank, we charge them our 4%, which is our gas they're charged, that our wholesaler charges us. And so we serve our community. We support local churches, different various functions that take place with monies and gift certificates also. As I drove here today, I drove down beautiful downtown Broad Street, which you've put a lot of money in, into Broad Street, and we're thankful for. We have signs hanging down the street that scream "Shop Local." It's on every corner. Shop local, be local. But yet, we're here trying to bring in a full-service quote-unquote grocery store, as was quoted by several people, that would not be local and would take from the local businesses here, not just from Johnson's Giant Food, but also the Gregerson's who have been in business in Gaston since the 1960s. But also the full, this full-service quote-unquote store would pull business from the 7+ local florists who also spread across our city, not to mention the 7+ local pharmacies that are spread the same. So in, in the news, interviews that I've seen where, where some who are running for mayor and such are pushing this grocery store, they're saying, a full-service grocery store. Well, full service means, it means that we pull from our florist, we pull from the 7+. It also means we pull from those pharmacies, those, those that have been in business for years and that their, their children are now running those pharmacies. That's what, that's what we'd be pulling from. With that being said, in the last 18 months, which was quoted, not one person came to Johnson's to offer the opportunity like was done to Food City. And also that there, that, that there isn't even a consideration to give a non-local grocery store over $6 million in tax abatements that, that was quoted, that would, they would be here for 30 years, that was probably how long it would take for them to pay back those tax abatements. And we, the locals, would have to pay for it. This is our grievance. Not one dime has been asked by us, and not one dime has been offered to us in 40 years. Just, my question is, and my grievance is, where is the extra sales going to come from for this store? Are we depending on Rainbow City, as Ms. Janice mentioned, several stores that are in Rainbow City? Are we, are we depending on pulling from the Publix or the Winn-Dixie from Rainbow City to, to feed in this store? Because if not, it's going to affect all of our local businesses. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Is there anyone speak in favor?
My name is Steven Spangler, I'm Vice President of Real Estate and Site Development for Kevat Food Stores, which is the parent company of Food City. I'm really here just to answer any questions you may have regarding the project, regarding our projections that we've, you know, obviously reviewed, the presentations that I've given in the past. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I do, I do have a couple of questions, but I want to just start out by making a broad stroke of general statement here. As a local small business owner myself, I can assure you that I'm hypersensitive to the idea of, of the impact that projects like this have on local businesses. The one thing I'll say to the first comments that we heard, I do think it's important that citizens in this community understand that the city does not go out and recruit businesses to come here. We don't own the Gaston Mall. The Gaston Mall is owned by a private entity. They own that property, they can sell that property to whoever they want to, they are responsible for putting businesses in there. We, the City of Gaston doesn't go out and recruit a, a toy store. We don't get to decide anything about what goes in the Gaston Mall. Ma'am?
Continue, Councilman Wilson.
I, I just want to make it clear that, so that everybody understands this, the city does not recruit businesses here. This is America. Any business that wants to come to the City of Gaston can come here. Any business that chooses not to come here, we don't have any control over that. Now, there is a law in Alabama called Amendment 772, which lays out the guidelines for how businesses can access rebates through a city. If a company comes to the City of Gaston and says, and meets all the guidelines of that law and says, we are asking for a rebate, we have to consider it. We can't just say yes or no, because here's what happens, and I'm just telling you all as an elected official, I get, I, I learned this over the last four years the hard way. If I vote no on this and say, no, we're not going to give these incentives to this private entity that's coming in to spend $14 million or whatever in this deal, the very first thing I'm going to hear is, there you go again, the good old boy network. Y'all are just protecting the Gregerson's and protecting the Johnson's. This city's up there picking winners and losers. That's the reason, nobody can make it in this town because the good old boys get protected by the city. And I'm telling you, it's a darned if you do, darned if you don't. Ma'am, I understand you disagree with me, but I really am trying to be honest and, and open with you about what the, what I deal with in situations like this. It's not as cut and dry, because I'm telling you, for every person who comes up here and says, I can't believe you're doing this to Johnson's, I can't believe you're doing this to Gregerson's, if we vote no on projects like this, there are equal number of people that fill my phone up, and I'm not making it up, it happens to me, every day. They go, I can't believe you, you're just protecting the good old boys that have always been in charge around here, and you're just passing laws to take care of them. And I share your frustrations on the incentive package. I've, I've owned a business in this town for 15 years, I've never gotten a single penny from this city in a tax abatement, a rebate of any kind. I didn't know, I, I started my business when I was 28 years old, I didn't know anything about how to go about getting tax abatements or incentives. But it is the name of the game. it is the name of the game these days. This is how it's played, and these individuals that own these larger chains understand that, and they understand how to make projects feasible that would have otherwise not been feasible. Now, I don't disagree with y'all that this is a big pill to swallow. This is a lot of money to give, to incentivize. But I also think it's important to understand that we are not giving one red cent to these individuals unless they go out and do what they say they're going to do. We don't give money upfront to these projects. The way these rebates work, and there was some confusion about this still online, we don't give any money upfront. What these individuals have come and said is, "We believe we're going to generate $20 million a year in revenue," which means they're going to owe the city, well, the sales tax in the city of Gadsden is 10%. So 10% of $20 million a year is $2 million. Now, the city only gets half of that. The other half of that goes to the state and the county. So the city would receive $1 million, half of the $2 million in taxes. So they have to go and spend $14 million to build this facility. Then they have to open up. They have to operate and generate $20 million in sales, and then they've got to pay their 10% sales tax. And then, once the city gets that $1 million, we would rebate some of it back to them. So we're not giving money out of the city budget to fund these projects. If we say no to this, it's not like we can take that money and put it somewhere else. The money doesn't exist. If this project doesn't happen, then that money never existed. So we're not giving away city money when we vote for projects like this, because it wouldn't, if, ma'am?
I still, I disagree with that, because you're taking it from the other stores that are paying you the whole money.
Oh, no.
Councilman Wilson, this will be a conversation that goes back and forth.
Okay, well, I've said all that to get into the.
Out of order. Go ahead. You go ahead.
I said all that to get into the question. Can you verify, I believe in our previous conversations, that you believed as much as 40% of your revenue would come from local grocery stores. Is that correct?
Correct.
That would be the cannibalization.
That's the cannibalization. The gentleman from Johnsons was, brought that up, obviously, and we've been very transparent from the beginning that some of the sales dollars that we generate will come from local Gadsden grocery stores. But the way our model projects this particular store and its particular location, what we deem as our main competition being Publix and Winn-Dixie, we are absolutely going to convert some of that floater leakage from Rainbow City, from Natale, from outside in Edoah County to come to this location. So there is going to be some cannibalization to local grocery sales tax dollars, absolutely. But we feel, and we've put together analysis, not only with the converted float leakage, the property tax, the jobs creation tax that all go along, that we feel that we would absolutely put the city in a net positive position even with the rebate. And that's during the 15-year share period that we are proposing, that we are asking that. But for that, with construction costs these days, we can't, this project's not feasible for us. We do not own the project, or the property currently right now. We're under contract, so this is part of our due diligence process.
Could you clarify who you're dealing with on this property? Again, I want to drive home the fact that the city does not own the mall.
The mall is owned by a large equity group called Fairlon out of San Francisco, California.
Okay.
Tom Steyer's old company. So we are under contract to buy a portion of the Sears building. The project entails us raising that, adjusting some of the.
Common term. You're going to tear it down.
Tear it down.
You would tear down the building and build a new structure back?
Build a 54,000-square-foot Food City. If anybody's been to our Albertville Food City, it'd be very similar to that location, same size. Just some of the access drives to accommodate the larger building and just, you know, with the property acquisition infrastructure, building of the project, and obviously equipping your grocery store, which is very expensive, we're projecting in today's dollars about $14 million of investment in the community. And again, we've been, in the, several times that we've met with council, we've had very, you know, detailed budgets, projections, and from day one, we've said, yes, we understand that we're not going to pretend that we're not going to impact some of the local businesses here. Competition's good, but we do feel that a pretty significant portion of our estimated sales will be coming outside of the Gadsden community. Just south of the site is obviously Rainbow City. They've got a Publix, a high-volume Publix, a Winn-Dixie there. Natale's got a Johnsons and another Walmart. So we do feel that just with the location and just how we analyze sites, just history of our sites that we put together, that we do feel pull from that type of trade area.
Thank you.
And I will say that we look at, I know it's $6.7 million, but that's over a 15-year period. So we always take our present position to present value, because we're spending that $14 million day one to build the project. That's coming out of our CapEx budget to construct this. And so when you say $6.7 million, yes, that seems like a large number, but that's over 15 years. We take that down to a present value number, and I think that's closer to about a $3.2 million valuation. So that's really what we look at, the incentive, not the 6.7.
Question about why Gadsden. In your research, obviously, you have well over 100 stores, so you have a model that you look for, or you have a process that you go through to determine. You obviously, on purpose, don't go to a city to spend $14 million for it not to work. So what gives you assurance or indication that this will work for Food City?
Sure. And just, you know, just a little bit of a, you know, an overview of the company. We're based in Abingdon, Virginia. We're a privately held company. We've got 135 stores in five locations, or five states, excuse me. We recently, within the last year, opened our first Alabama store in Albertville. It's been very successful for us. And so part of doing that was we kind of had a focus on northeast Alabama. So we're looking at several markets to expand our footprint, so to speak, and we have market analysts that do pretty extensive reviews of markets. We've been looking at Gadsden probably a year and a half. It's an evaluation of obviously the trade area. We hand draw all of our trade areas. It's a validation of, or evaluation of competition. We obviously need to be confident that there's a demand there to support an additional grocery store. Our modeling is somewhat proprietary and pretty accurate, and we feel that Gadsden can support another grocery store at the level that we've projected into the analysis that we provided to council.
I'd like to know what you're going to do for our community, like in the way of stuff y'all did in other cities for the communities.
Sure. And gentlemen from Johnsons, it seems like they're very plugged into their community, and we're the same way. We're a private company, and we pride ourselves on being a corporate partner to the communities. We have very successful programs. One of note is our school bucks, that a percentage of our sales gets reinvested back into local schools, you know, based on each consumer has a value card. They can link that to a particular school, and based on that calculation, that school at the end of the year would get a certain check. Since the program's been started, we've donated over $20 million to local school systems. In 2021, that check was over $700,000. We've partnered with local, you know, areas on, you know, sports complexes. We've done, we just opened a store in Cookfield, Tennessee, two weeks ago. They had a pretty significant tornado event two years ago. It was March of 2020. We were just in preliminary discussions on whether that was a market we wanted to locate to, but when we saw the need of the community, our president and CEO leveraged our store base and communities and raised over $400,000 in a week to present a check to Cookfield, Tennessee, and Putnam County for their tornado relief fund. And granted, we didn't have a store there. Our closest store was 40 miles away, and we just opened that store. That happened in March of '20. We just opened that store two weeks ago. So it was just knowing communities, getting support from communities at that time we were getting, and, you know, we saw the need and we stepped up and we provided that. But you will absolutely find that we will become an ingrained member of the community if we locate here. But I just want to be clear that, you know, but for this particular project, you know, this is necessary for us to move forward.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
My name is James Shaw, and I'm with Gadsden Mall. So I am a part of the community as well. And I just wanted to address a couple of things that the lady was talking about earlier. You know, one of those things was, she mentioned that she shopped at the Publix and at the Walmart on 77. And as I think a few people have mentioned, you know, those are stores outside of Gadsden, and these gentlemen with Food City will supply tax money for Gadsden, and the money will stay here. I think that's an important item to think about. But also, you know, she mentioned some stores that she'd like to see at the mall, and I have been with several mall developers through my years of mall management. And I would like to say that, you know, retail environment's changed quite a bit. I mean, for example, Sears itself, there was, at one time, I think there was over 6,000 Sears stores, and now I think there's 20. So, you know, things do change. Years ago, we did have toy stores in the mall, and we did have men's stores, but shopping habits changed, consumers changed, and, you know, we'd love to have these stores in the mall. We'd love to have a toy store in the mall. I don't know that you can buy toys in this community outside of Walmart, you know? But at the same time, to get those kind of retailers to commit to coming here, I mean, everybody knows the story about KB Toys, right? There was, I can't tell you how many KB toy stores there were, and they filed bankruptcy and went out of business, you know? It's easier to buy stores, toys, online now. So, you know, that's some of our things that we compete against. And, you know, I think that the ownership before this current ownership tried to lease that space and get something going, and I can tell you that the management company that I work for, Spinoza Management, is working very hard to get this space leased up. We don't want it to be a blight on the community. We don't want, you know, 100,000 square foot vacant space sitting out there. So they've been working very hard. And I know Food City is committed to the area here, and they're committed to Gadsden. So, you know, to me, it seems like it would be a benefit to our community. So obviously, a benefit to the mall, and I think that it would bring more traffic to the mall, and that would generate more sales tax money as well, so.
Could I ask you a question about the mall? It's been said that this would be, a store like this could be a large benefit to the mall, and I think you just addressed that, but could you maybe address that a little bit further? I mean, the mall, for years, has been, I don't know what percentage has been leased and not leased, but it's always a concern, I think, of everyone, like what happens if the mall is empty? You know, it's a large space, and what happens if it's empty? There has been a lot of real positive activity there. Trey Regazzi's in the alley and some others, but what does, in your opinion, you've, I guess, been in the mall management business for a few decades, I should assume. So is, what do you think this does for the mall? Does it help to attract even other stores for you? Or is it some kind of a game changer for the mall, or is it not that big of a deal?
Oh, yes, sir. I think that a store like Food City would bring a lot of other stores. It would create some interest, so it's up to, you know, the Spinoza folks to close the deal. But there'd be more interest in the mall. It would revive it a little bit, you know, like you've mentioned, the alley and Trey Regazzi's that, and hopefully, we can get another restaurant over there by Trey Regazzi's. We're trying to work on that as well, so. And, you know, there's a lot of restaurants in town, but if we could add another one to it and there's more variety and things like that, you know, that's, we try to offer the customers in Gadsden, you know, more of every type of retail there is, so. It would definitely benefit the mall. I think it would help increase sales, and like you said, we might attract some more tenants as well.
What's your opinion of the fuel depot that would be in that, I call it the side parking lot or whatever, behind Longhorn? Is that a detriment, or is that, does it hurt traffic, or?
I don't think it, it's not a detriment to the mall. I think that, you know, it's a benefit to Food City to bring more people in for their business as well, and, you know, they offer a lot of different things. I've been in a Food City. It's a great-looking store, so.
Thank you.
Jamie Fleagle, and I'm with New Real Estate. I just want, Kevin Jennings, my partner, and I have been working with Food City for several years, and we first worked with them in Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. And I'm speaking to here today just because we were the responsible for bringing them to Albertville, and we worked with the city of Albertville to help bring Food City to Albertville. And in that process, you know, what's unique about Albertville is Albertville is home to Mitchells, which is the wholesale grocery that provides groceries for a lot of the independent groceries from around the state or parts of Alabama. And so you can imagine that the city providing an incentive to make sure that that development happened was not overlooked by the Mitchell family as well. And what I, and I had, before coming here today, I'd actually had become friends with Mike Price and with the city of Albertville, and he had just had a couple of things I'd like to share with you guys. And he said, "The biggest concern that they, the city, had had was the grocery cannibalization with Foodland and Piggly Wiggly." But all indications are that the expected and desired effect was achieved as grocery sales in Foodland actually increased from 2019 to '21, 20 outliers due to COVID. And he said, "It's apparent that the millions in grocery sales attributed to the Food City have helped fill a gap in retail grocery leakage leaving our city's borders and new businesses attached from the neighboring region." And I think that's important, because, you know, grocery stores, there is going to be a certain amount of cannibalization, but if you look at what happened in the Albertville community and the investment that the Mitchell family made into their existing location and how they differentiated themselves from the Food City, their sales actually went up, and I think that's something that needs to be noted. And then, as it talks about how it benefits the mall itself, Mike also pointed out that according to a mobile tracking data service called Placer ID, from the nine months that the store had been open, at this particular time when Mike wrote me this email, there had been 1.27 million visits to the Food City Shopping Center there, and the average stay was 59 minutes. That's absolutely going to drive traffic to the mall and all the existing retailers there, so. Thank you.
Right. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
We've had a lot of discussions. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no-vote motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution declaring a one-year moratorium on certain new business licenses. This enacts a one-year moratorium on the issuance of new license for payday loans, car title loans, and check cashing businesses within the city. The purpose is to prevent overdevelopment, to provide for balance and promote prosperity and welfare of the citizens. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor of adopting the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with Gaston Ronald's Club. This is for 2022 season, club title sponsorship, and the amount is $2,500. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Gaston Edoah County Emergency Management Agency and the Edoah County Emergency Communication Districts. This is regarding an upgrade of the Motorola radio equipment, and the total cost is $327,822, and the city's portion is $92,360.25. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Gaston Edgewall County Emergency Management Agency and the Edgewall- locations requests within the city limits, and the annual estimated amount is $1,000. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with S&amp;M E and Company, and this is for a required environmental assessment for the Nakalula Falls Gorge Trail Presbyterian As, I said, pedestrian access improvement project. The funding is from a DECA recreational trail program grant, and the amount is $8,800. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
You sure that's in a Baptist or a Catholic?
I'm telling you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Items 16 through 23.
23.
Yeah, is there anything that prevents us from doing those in town?
Oh, I was going to ask, do them all together?
Yeah.
We have eight items here that are resolutions that are authorizing amendment number one to agreement for drainage study paid for the federal funds. The amendment will add required federal language specifying the responsibility of the architect, engineer, contractor, work oversight in the architect's, engineer contract, and requirement for registration of design. And we have these, these are drainage studies, and one is Greenwood Avenue, Arrowhead Drive, Peyton Road, North Gaston Park, Goldenrod, Presley Avenue area, 9th Street, North, Lay Street, East Brock Street from 22nd to 15th Street North, Oak Park area. We have South Gaston area, South 11th to Hickory Street, and then we have West Miggan, North 11th Street to Tuscaloosa. I'll entertain a motion to adopt all eight of these items.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all eight resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt all eight resolutions.
Okay, and I just left out South Fifth and South Sixth Street area in there. New business? Any boards or committee reports? Mr. Woodall is not here, present today, so we'll have remarks and announcements. Councilman, will you?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I just want to take the opportunity to recognize, and just say how thankful I am for all of the activities that churches across the nation have been engaging in as far as giveaways and blessings to the communities that they function in. In particular, there are two within District 2 here in Gadsden. Pastor Bradley Mullinax and James Memorial Baptist Church, as I understand it, scheduled and conducted a giveaway, gas giveaway, at Patterson's Grocery and Gas on the 15th, which was Friday. And Pastor Steve Smith did something similar in terms of a gas giveaway and a number of other things at the Chevron here in Gadsden, and that was done by New Destiny Church on the 16th, which was Saturday. So I do want to just take the opportunity to recognize those folks for a job well done, for being tuned in and sensitive to the needs of the community, and touching people probably where they needed help the most. So thank them so much for what they did. And it really ties into something that, something that I've been preaching for some time, and I'd love for us to, I've been getting some good feedback from people that remembered it, and I'd like us to continue to remember that this is a season for paying it forward. So please continue to do that. If you take the opportunity, whether you're in a drive-through, whether you're standing in line at a grocery store or a convenience store, wherever you are, identify somebody that may be in need or not, and just pay it forward, because I think, again, this is a great season for that. And the last thing I have, Madam President, is as I understand it, I didn't get the pleasure this year, this is the first one I've missed ever, but they had the old-school event this week, this weekend, and as I understand it, it was well-attended. The weather cooperated where we thought it was going to rain, the weather cooperated, and it was a good outing, so, again, do appreciate the organizers of that event and all who attended it and supported it. That's all I have.
Councilman Back.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to revisit, while they're still here, Emma Clapp and Ms. Falcon, y'all are what's good about Gadsden. The work that you do at the Family Success Center, Emma, with your staff and your board is immeasurable. Your heart for helping people that are less fortunate is exactly what the Lord calls on us to do, and you personify that to the nth degree. So thank you for the Family Success Center and for all the things that you do. Ms. Falcon, y'all moved here in 2010. I would be remiss not to mention my good friend Leroy Falcon, who is your husband, who is a very good friend, and, you know, all y'all have done is come to Gadsden and help people. You moved here from Louisiana. Leroy Falcon run is the executive director of our YMCA, Young Men's Christian Association, and that organization touches so many segments of our population, far too many to list, so thank you for what you do, and thank you for your work with the children of our community that are what I consider the least, or the most, rather, vulnerable, and who you have to see every day, and see them at their, maybe at their worst. And it's, I cannot imagine, I get a little, almost teary-eyed thinking about what you people have to do day in and day out in order to help our community be a better community as hard as it is through law enforcement and doing what has to be done to stop that. And so thank you for what you do. Thank you is not enough, but I just, just thank you, and thank you for all the things that you do for our community. There's a, I think Madam President's going to mention the Ram Clinic, so I won't go into that, but Lou Mitchell, who's a good friend of mine, has brought that to Gadsden. This will be the first Ram Clinic. It's a medical clinic in the state of Alabama through this organization, and I'll let Madam President talk about that. She has the poster, and you can get all the facts. But thank you to all the volunteers with the Ram Clinic, just another way of how Gadsden takes care of our own and takes care of our citizens, and again, those that are less fortunate. As we've been sitting here this morning, you've heard a helicopter. That helicopter is trying to spot the young lady that jumped to her death in the Coussa River off our Memorial Bridge. What a tragic event, and again, I want to pray for our first responders. There were first responders that saw her, and they couldn't reach her in time. They were in the water within minutes. Our police department commandeered a private boat, and of course, the person was glad to help, and they tried to get there, but they couldn't get there in time. So, you know, there's a lot of eyes that have seen a lot of things in the past few days that they can't unsee. So please pray for those that are out there, working on behalf of our community, to serve our community, and then also, obviously, keep in your prayers the family that is having to deal with this. It's just a tragic event, and we offer up our prayers and support for those that are having to work it. And last, I want to talk about Food City. That's in my district, District 4. The Gaston Mall resides in my district. These are hard decisions to make. Nobody up here wants to harm any local business, but we have to look at the overall betterment for the city of Gadsden. I live down Rainbow Drive, and we shop in Rainbow City. We don't shop in Gadsden, so I look at this as a neighborhood-type store for my district, for Country Club and Clubview, also for the downtown area. We've looked at this and studied it, and so we know there will be some cannibalization. Hopefully, the rising tide will lift all ships, like the real estate gentleman was saying that's happening up in Albertville. Everywhere that Food City's been, they've been successful. They're huge community partners, so I think we'll see that come to fruition here, and, you know, it's all, you know, you read on social media, there's nothing to do in Gaston, Gaston's dying, and, you know, there's a $14 million investment that's coming, and that's why I ask him, why did you choose Gadsden? You know, so he thinks that it's a profitable venture, or else they wouldn't come here. So, again, just hopeful that it doesn't bring any harm to anybody. That's never anybody's intention, but Gadsden needs to grow, and we talk about being a growing city, and that's just evidence that there is some growth happening, and hopefully it is going to have an impact on the mall, as the mall manager said. So just, again, some of these votes aren't easy. You never want to negatively impact anyone. At the same time, we've got a large city, and we have to consider all of those kind of thoughts in, when you're making those decisions, and please respect everybody's vote and opinion of how they feel. So just wanted to address that. But please, please keep our first responders and be cognizant of what they're doing. As you drive up and down Albert Rains, and you see them out there in the boats and stuff, just say a prayer. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything.
Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just, the only thing really is the Food City vote. I just want to make it clear, I'm excited to have Food City here, and I do think that it'll be a good thing for this community. It was just too big of a pill for me to swallow. I just think that was too much money. I mean, if it, I, that's the only reason I voted no. Again, for kind of the same reasons that Councilman Back mentioned, Johnson's is in my district in downtown, and so I do shop at Johnson's every day, and they have been contributing members of this community for a long time, but that's not the reason that I voted no. The reason I voted no is just because I thought it was a little too much money for them. But again, I'm excited for them to be here, and I do think it'll be a good thing for the city, and I want to drive this home every chance I get. Please, please understand that our commercial development department did not get in a car and go drive and try to find Food City and encourage them to come here. Food City came to us, and we worked with them for an abatement, a rebate program that would entice them to move forward with the project. We don't go out and volunteer city dollars in these abatement deals. We don't go out and try to proactively offer the city's money out to these businesses. They come to us. It is a reactionary thing. It's not a proactive thing in the, in the commercial development world. That's, that's the way it works. Gaston Commercial Development exists. These developers, like the one you spoke, or heard speak about, the Albertville store, he is a private entity that gets paid to go out and find land and projects to develop, and he recruited Food City, and he worked with the Gaston Mall, which is privately owned, to come up with a deal, and then they approached the city after that deal was in place and asked for support to make the project viable. I just want to make sure that every citizen understands that. When, when I hear people say, "There's too many restaurants in this town," I'm telling you right now, again, this is America. It is a free market. If 500 people came to Gadsden tomorrow and said, "We all want to open up Crystal Burgers," I could not stop them from doing that. They can open as many restaurants as they want to, they can open as many grocery stores as they want to, and they are eligible to the same tax incentives and abatements that everyone else is. And to that point, we've had that discussion before. I did vote in favor of a tax incentive rebate program for a grocery store in Alabama City, but that was because Alabama City was designated as a food desert, meaning they did not have access to groceries within a two-mile radius of the city center of the community there. So I did vote because, for that, because I felt like that was meeting a specific need for the citizens in Alabama City. But again, I'm excited to have Food City here, and I understand that it's a controversial issue. That's all I have, Madam President.
I have a couple of announcements, as Councilman Back alluded to. This coming weekend, which is April the 23rd and the 24th, there's going to be a free Ram Medical Clinic, where you have free dental, free vision, and free medical. It's going to be at the Gaston City High School, and it says the parking lot will open no later than 12:00 a.m., and numbered tickets will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis at 3:00 a.m. The clinic doors will open at 6:00 a.m. both days. You don't have to have any insurance, you don't have to have any identification. This is a free event, and as was said earlier, this is the first time that this has happened in Gaston, well, in Alabama. So we, those of you that know, and I'm quite sure there are going to be people coming from surrounding areas, so you have an opportunity, and I think glasses and things will be done on the spot. So this will be April the 23rd and April the 24th. Also like to announce that I attend Gaston State last evening, 5:30, and Dr. Murphy, who is the president of the junior college, who has come to Gaston and hit the ground running, has announced that baseball and softball will be put back at Gaston State. And we all know that if a college or a school doesn't have an athletic program, there's not very much recruiting that they can do. They can some, but not just for academics, but for athletics. So it'll be a well-rounded, and it'll be good for the community. And her big talk was that she's asking for the community to support baseball, and it won't be coming next year because her, the athletic, not director, but the state athletic director said they have to have something in place first, so it'll be 2023 when this comes about. They will be using the softball field and baseball field on Miggan until the completion of the Gaston Sports Complex field for their area. So that was a big thing for Gaston State and the announcement that was made. The other thing that I would like to say, I think last week, they had the Human Relations Committee meeting, and I thought that was a very good meeting. It talked about, one of the things that they talked about was the, especially the police and the things that were happening, and the people. And so basically, the committee was saying, and the things that they were emphasizing is that parents and the public has to get involved. And I always would like to say, and I used to say, before you judge an issue, find out all the facts about it first, before you make comments and before you make statements, because I was thinking when Councilman Wilson said, is this, I've been trying to say Presbyterian all morning. I'm not Presbyterian, I'm Baptist, but that doesn't make any difference. But what I wanted to say in those lines, we've got to start, sure, we live in a fallen world, but we got to start thinking positive. There's more right with the world than there is wrong, and there's more right going on in this city than it is wrong. And so we need to think about, sure, think about the things that are going on that you can change, but there's more right with Gaston that there is wrong. And so that's what we need to, we need to focus on. Just think of the positive things, think of the good things instead of the negative things. If there's nothing else, I call for a motion. Oh, I'd just like to ask everyone to remember our city clerk. She is not feeling well, she's home, and so we just ask you to pray for, to pray for her also. If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.